Call the meeting to order.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Dechamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Moncor? Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes, here.
And Mr. Chairman?
Here. Uh, thank you. We're gonna just to go into executive session, uh, we need a vote for going to executive session.
Second.
Second. Need roll call or can I do?
No, we need roll call.
Yep.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Dechamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Moncor?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, we're back in session and the first part I'd like to do is, um, is to read the statement in regards to review.
Good evening. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. By participating in this meeting, you understand that the recording could contain your video stream or your audio stream, including images of yourself or anyone in the room with you. If you choose to enable your video or audio device during the meeting, as well as anything or anyone else that may be in the background could be recorded. The recording could include any opinions you contribute and anything you say about yourself. On occasion, chat within the meeting could also be captured in the meeting recording. Therefore, anyone attending the recorded meeting may have aspects of their personal data reported if they actively participate or not.
Thank you. We are in session and we made some, it, uh, on the agenda, we moved the request for executive session to be done first. Bargaining and contract negotiations and non-personnel. And the next item is the appointment of a school business administrator and a vote will be required. So.
Second.
On the business administrator is approved, I should say seconded, and the person is Allison Pelisir. We spoke about in executive session and we, um, are going to vote a three, two and a, almost a two and a half year contract, effective for Allison Pelisir, October fourteenth through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, um, and then a two-year contract July first through, July first twenty twenty-six through June thirtieth twenty twenty-eight. And there will be also a salary discussion and adjustment in regards to, uh, going forward for the next two years of the contract. So it is a three-year contract to go from a period of, uh, prorated from October to June and then from July to, July first twenty-six to twenty-eight, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Made the motion and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just had a little tech glitch. Trying to, no, you too. Show my computer off. Booted it. Is it trying to pick me up? I have no idea. I've never seen this, but. It wasn't that earlier. Here we are. Andrew would be so proud of me tonight. I know, to test me. Watch me sweat.
Okay, now we'll do roll call. Appointment of the business manager.
Dr. Allen? Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Dechamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Moncor?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Thank you. I'm gonna turn over the superintendent to introduce and to welcome Allison Pelisir.
Okay, well, hopefully you met her out in the hallway, but this is, this is Allison over here to Stacy's right. She joins us, um, from formerly at Pathfinder Regional. And she was an assistant business manager there. She has regional school experience, which as you know, is, uh, challenging to find. We are pleased to say we have fewer towns than what Pathfinder worked with. And she's, I think she's really excited to be here and I know we're super excited to welcome her here to Quabon. So Stacy's going to allow her to have lunch, uh, one of these days. They've been, they took the ground running together and, uh, so busy that they've worked right through lunch, so. Welcome, Allison.
Welcome. Would you like to say a couple of words?
You guys stole my thunder, but I, I did come from Pathfinder. I'm very excited to be here. Was the assistant business manager. I was able to obtain my licensure while I was there. I'm MCTPO certified. With a lot of experience and I'm very excited. I'm excited to see what I can do for the school district. So thank you for having me.
Welcome. Is there anybody in, in the comments? Seeing and hearing none. Um, I think we need one more thing. Do we need a roll call to, for the student representative? Did we?
Yeah, I can. Ella, are you here?
Good. And back to the agenda, the consent, uh, the consent agenda will need a vote in your packet and in your packet this evening, as well as on, on, in the, portal, approval of minutes for September eighteenth and the warrant approval consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Dr. Allen?
Upstate.
Mr. Marsh?
Upstate.
Mr. Dechamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Stand.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Moncor?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Thank you. Student Advisory Council? Okay.
Yeah, I don't really have that much new for you. Unified, we had our first game and it was amazing. We had so many sports teams come and watch us, which was great. Yeah, cheer, the football team, field hockey. And it was such a great environment. It was really, really great game.
That band soccer.
That band, so, yeah. People there, it was great. Yeah. Then I don't have any, anything else. If anybody has questions for me.
Mark?
I don't.
There was a very nice write-up in the telegram and Gazette about our friend over there, the things she's been doing, the activities, her life experience, that sort of thing. And it was really very impressive to see and it was great for one of our kids to have caught the attention and be written up for the whole county, Worcester County.
Yeah, that was the telegram Gazette.
Correct. Yes.
Who was the reporter?
Um.
Remember?
No.
That's okay.
Sports reporter.
It's linked in our, in Wright Director's Report.
Yeah, cuz I remember too. Is that the one that wanted to do more stories with Quabon?
It's a different one.
It's a different one, okay, because we're trying to do that as well. That was great. Since the last meeting, how's the adjustment going from lunches from the student perspective and your transition?
Um, I mean, I'd say the lunches are pretty much the same as last time. They're definitely packed and they're definitely chaotic, but I can get lunch and eat it in the time, which is good. I, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of standing in the line, so I wait like ten minutes and then I'll get in a much shorter line. That's what I do. I mean, it's manageable. It's not great, but, you know.
What, you had that same question?
That was my question.
And then quickly, how's the culture and climate and things settling in, in the first six, seven weeks of school?
Um, I'd say it's pretty good. I don't really have any big negatives for you. I think, like, we always bring up the phone thing. I think that's been going well. Really have anything else.
Thank you very much. And then we have, uh, New Horizons Academy student presentation.
Mm-hmm. So tonight, we have our two leads in the classroom, so Mr. Keith Corandis, and if I say your name incorrectly, please correct me, uh, and Stacy Mackowitz. They both have challenging names on paper, doing my best. But Keith is the classroom teacher and Stacy is, uh, the guidance support in the classroom. And so I believe they're gonna share from the student perspective what's been happening. Um, and also Mrs. Whitelaw and Mrs. Jenkins are over in the program one day a week and, um, supporting our classrooms over there as well. So we can't wait to hear more about it.
Um, yeah, so we have a short PowerPoint presentation. I don't know where you want us to stay.
Wherever you're comfortable.
The boys, all the students did complete it, so this is all their words and their work. And I wish they could have been here. It couldn't work out for them today, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay, so our first slide talks about climate and culture at New Horizons in the past six weeks that they've been able to, um, get settled in and get used to their routine and a number of things that they popped up.
I'm gonna, I'm so sorry. I'm having a day.
All right, so.
Okay, there we are.
So the fellow's oil, climate and culture, um, and this is all for the student point. Like I said, what we do is we assign, um, we came up as a group, we brainstormed a couple of ideas that we wanted to make sure that the community was aware of and then we assigned them each to different students and they worked collaboratively. And then we came as a larger group and we provided feedback to each other. So it was quite a long process that they went through over the past few weeks working on this. Um, climate and culture was our first slide and they had talked a lot about the fact that it is welcoming. The staff here are very welcoming. Mr. Kim, Ms. Matt are both very helpful and kind and they're here to help everybody. Kindness was a big one. The students and teachers, people involved with this program are extremely welcoming. Kindness is one of the biggest things we strive for, so everyone feels comfortable. Flexibility, everything about the program is flexible. You can have breaks whenever you need, as long as you're been focused. There's also two large group breaks that we help to support kind of like a community, um, perspective for them, where they get to go play hoops or play games together, um, that are scheduled in, so that's protected time for them. Comfortable, just they're talking about their seating arrangements, there's lots of comfortable options for seats. It's never been too hot for them. Individual, when we're working on individual work and everybody is normally very locked in on their work and they don't disturb anybody else. It's really trying to get their work out. So really respecting their fellow student and also being able to take their break if they need to. They like that flexibility. Equality, everyone here is equal and they are entitled to the same things. Everyone is welcome to access. And the food that's offered and school supplies. We have like a shared closet for kind of some snacks. Then we also have school supplies that are shared that they can come and take if they need. And then opportunity, a greater opportunity for kids who struggle in the bigger areas and kids who struggle with doing work in general. The work's very flexible and it helps get your credits once you've fallen behind.
Hey, we're not working. There we go. Is that the right slide?
This is a day in the life.
I was trying to read the last word.
How do we learn?
How do we learn? Okay, there we go. So, um, we always start our day with a morning warm-up activity. Um, either Ms. Mack and myself, we do something to get their brains going. We do games, like puzzle games, crosswords, Kahoot, something as they're coming in in the morning. They're getting breakfast, they're getting settled to kind of get them moving and thinking. Um, once we do that, we have a quick morning meeting. I usually try and do a question of the day, something to just bounce ideas off each other. We stand in a circle. I do the whole round robin, pass around something for who's talking. Um, and then they get into their, first of their two edgenuity sessions. And, I mean, they do spend a lot of time on the computer on edgenuity. We have encouraged them, especially in the morning, that they should be separated individuals, so they're not chit-chatting, and working on their different assignments. Ms. Mack will chat with some of them. I'll pull one at a time to do different work. I have a couple planned groups for English and math throughout the day to get kids together and really focus in on those subjects. Um, at eleven o'clock to eleven thirty, we always have an SEL time for Ms. Mack to go over. There, and I'll let you talk about that a little bit more because, I mean, you do a lot of different things there.
Wait, I, I kind of have a theme for the day, so it could be anything from coping strategies that we're explicitly teaching them, different ways to encounter challenging discussions or challenging tasks. They want to use the coping strategy. We do some guidance lessons, so many of our students are still working on, like maybe applying for jobs or looking at kind of continuing it after. So we're talking about like, how are we applying for that? Can we run through some pre-test, post-test, things of that nature? We also do, I'm gonna draw a blank now, but a number of different social emotional things. Social skills is the big one, where maybe like, uh, one of our activities, we teach them how to build a tower together and then, um, they had to collaborate on making the biggest tower. And so like working and using those coping, uh, social strategies to help kind of beat the other teams, um, in working collaboratively in that lesson. So it could be any one of those things throughout the week. And then group work, there's scheduled time periods, like Mr. Kim said, um, where everybody is coming in, everybody's working on their ELA studies or their math studies or their global policy studies, um, so that we can kind of keep the community knowing that like we're might, we might encounter something challenging and with this fellow right next to you is probably gonna encounter it too, we can collaborate a little bit in that sense. Right, so the environment of where they are, so there are a couple pictures down here that they took showing kind of their desk and positioning, um, throughout the two classrooms that we have at New Braintree. They say that our furniture has a wide variety, the place is comfy, people are flexible and it, um, it's laid back. So if you have a bad day, you can kind of take space in, um, in area that is a little more, maybe a beanbag or out in the, um, common area that we have. I don't know, folks have been to New Braintree, but we have this beautiful kind of foyer that they are able to really take space outside of that environment and, um, be on their own until they can feel ready to come back. The work is self-paced to improve student morale and allow them to take breaks when they're feeling overstimulated. This makes for better working environment and helps students stay locked in. I also noticed that we're seeing some successes, little successes right along the way and so they're able to feel more motivated, hopefully getting in, um, getting into it a little bit more and the space be very quiet and peaceful for, for top-notch work ethic, maximum focus.
One, one, I didn't write this.
Students feel invited and welcomed when they come to school and that they won't ever want to leave. People involved in the program are very kind and helpful.
We got some great pictures of some of our students working in some of, we have the high-top tables. We've got some smaller, lower-down tables. As Stacy said, we have a beanbag chair. We've got a, one small hammock chair. We have, um, some nice cushion seats that they can sit in. And they tend to move around and choose different spots depending on how they're feeling for the day. And, you know, usually we'll come in for these table areas for our group work, so I can get everybody together. We're all kind of sitting in shared space. But otherwise, they're spread out and you know, focusing in and I'll just pop in and check in with them periodically.
So a big kind of philosophy of ours too is like building that connection to their community. So community service has been a part of what we've had them participate in. We have a couple of different options throughout the year, so the Q Clouds of his right business in New Braintree. Um, and so they're able to help, um, organize any of the donations. They work directly with postgrad and provide some support to each other. To do that, it's open every Monday from twelve through two. Pre-K, they've been able to offer some opportunities such as cutting out items, like if, um, Ms. P needs some letters cut out or wants some shapes cut out, or they've also been able to help play some games or go out to recess and just be able to dig in the sand to set the little guys for a little bit. Postgrad engagement, we interact with postgrads during break and at lunch and we have participated in some cooking and baking activities as well as community movies and field trips together. And the Barry Food Pantry, which is located at the Barry Congregational Church. Um, and they serve pantry food twice a month. We've been able to stop by and provide assistance, um, to those, um, community members and they loved it. They thought it was like the best thing, not only to see the young faces, but the guys were fantastic. And just being able to practice some of those social skills and really make a connection to the community, that was one of the best things that we felt.
We, we definitely, we had one student that, uh, actually works at Market Basket. We were joking, he's getting plenty of price. He was out bagging groceries for people in their cars and just doing an awesome job. They, they really, I was very proud of them when we went to the, uh, food pantry. I also do wanna say, um, as far as postgrad involvement, I love the community that we're building between our program and the postgrad. We get together for, um, all of our Alice training, um, different activities, kids' birthdays. We kind of celebrate all of those together. So there's, even though it's, you know, out in the middle of nowhere, kind of, um, we have our own community and it's nice that we have that.
Time for the data points?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, we review, uh, our attendance is reviewed monthly and obviously I take it daily. Um, but based off that, there has been an average twelve percent decrease in absences in this group of students compared to the same time during last foot year. Um, and honestly, I have been pleasantly surprised with how much of, we're seeing attendance. For the most part, most of the guys are showing up every day. There's very few absences with minor exceptions. Um, and most of the times that they've been out, it's been legitimately, they've been ill. Um, beyond that, we are tracking their edgenuity progress. I run reports and Excel sheets every day that, um, Jill Eng was reviews periodically and I really believe that they are making more progress in their classwork than they would be making in a standard classroom at this point. Um, they've, we've already had one student complete a class, a half-year class, but he just decided he really liked that class, so he focused in and that's what he did and he did a really great job. I think he ended up with, uh, eighty-six for the class overall. But yeah, they're making some excellent progress in edgenuity and if I see, you know, I keep track daily of what they're getting done and if I see things starting to slip, we have a meeting and they know this is on them. This is an opportunity that they need to take advantage of. Um, did you want to talk?
We're also, um, implementing or piloting a social emotional, um, risk screener, universal screener that we're using, which is called the Saber, so it identifies kind of like strengths and weaknesses, strengths and weaknesses across three different domains, social, academic, and emotional behavior. Um, it's a progress monitoring tool that we can use throughout the year. So what we would do is we would, uh, our first, actually our first administration was today and what I would do is I'm gonna take that information review with the students and then we can decide on interventions that might be supportive throughout that time or things that they're really excelling on. And so the next time we can see they are able to administer anything in January, we will see if that intervention or that support was effective. What have gone up or if there's something that we still need to tweak a little bit. So we'll be able to monitor throughout the school year. So community engagement and future planning, a couple of things that they wanted to throw out there. We would love to add to our environment, beanbags, wobble stools, weight equipment, board games. They really love, I am a big fan of working from a social emotional standpoint because I think if you play suits and ladders, you're definitely gonna encounter some frustration. You'd be able to really access those coping strategies. Um, adding to our experiential learning opportunities such as some field trips. Um, they would love to go to museums. They wanted to go see the Butterfly Museum. I think there's an art museum in Worcester that they were really interested in and they're done their own research on those things. And supporting our community, so looking at like some fundraising opportunities that we could, um, provide donations potentially to a nonprofit organization. They had identified breast cancer awareness and Alzheimer awareness as two of the things that they would like to work towards in some way. We talked about maybe developing a T-shirt, something of that nature, um, that we might be able to kind of sell. So things in the works. And then community service opportunities. I'd love to do more work with the Food Pantry, the Senior Center of Historical Society are three of the places that they identified as well. Then this is, in probably about two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we sent, um, offered them kind of like a student survey about how they were feeling about that first week. Again, with it being a brand-new program, I think the more data and kind of like responses that we can get or, um, thoughts that we can get or feedback is really important. So these are some of the things, the answers that they gave to what does NHA mean to you? And what would you tell the community, your friends or parents about NHA? So these are right from their words. I copied and pasted and, um, they talked about thinking the space where I find it easier to get schoolwork done and it's not overcrowded. Besides what it stands for, so NHA is the New Horizons. That the program wants the students to succeed, wants the best and wants to fix issues. I'm not sure yet, but I'm proud to be in the program, but I need more time to feel what's actually needs me, which is totally valid. Four weeks in, um, one, just progress, like he was feeling successful already. Safe space for people to get and good space for improvement in an overall and better environment. Um, way more flexible, safer environment for understanding and getting my work done efficiently. And then what would you tell your community?
Yeah, they, um, I think, and one of the things I love here, great place if they find trouble with school in those aspects, specifically too many people, that makes it difficult to do anything. Um, it's one of the, I'd say recurring themes that we've heard from some of our students that it's really among people, they just start to feel overwhelmed and then they feel anxious and they don't want to be there. So having a smaller, more intimate space is better for them in their learning. Um, they said it's a great opportunity for those who struggle in school and that we are realistic with them. Um, we talk about, again, this is on them. They're gonna get in, get out what they put in and they've been doing a great job. And they say it's a great opportunity for change and success, but it's also very judgment-free for you, where you don't have to feel ashamed for doing bad. And I think Stacy and I both agree, we both said the same thing. There are no good or bad kids. They're just kids and they make decisions.
I think that's the last slide.
Yeah, I think it is. I, I did wanna point on Casey. If you guys were not aware, the name New Horizons Academy is actually something that the students came up with and then was voted on by the students and, uh, staff members involved in the program. So that was actually a name that was created by one of our students.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, two things.
Yes.
You talked about war games and the Worcester Art Museum. I assume you know, but in case this is new, the old Higgins Armory, some of their stuff is over there now in the Worcester Art Museum.
I did not know that, yeah.
I, I did cuz I used to look at Higgins Armory, so.
Okay, there you go, but it seemed to me that's, that's an interesting, uh, synchronization.
Yeah, that would be.
And so how many kids?
Right now, there are, I believe there are ten enrolled.
Yeah, we have ten students enrolled currently. Um, we have interviewed an eleventh and our program caps out at fifteen currently.
What are the requirements for them to join in, to enroll?
Um, it is students who are either two years behind on their high school career trajectory or in danger of becoming that two years behind. So we have, we tend to skew towards slightly older students, junior seniors who have missed a lot of credits, failed a lot of classes. But we also have a few younger students who just were not finding success, either because they were not making it to school or were not able to focus in school, who we are working with as well.
What, what time does their day start?
Uh, we run from eight until two.
This is your first year of this program?
Yes.
Okay, so in essence, one of the key data point that you have is, is that twelve percent reduction in being absent, which is actually a big issue, right? That tends to be huge. What other, uh, measurable outcome that you've seen so far? And I think this is a short period of time to get data. Uh, resume by the end of the year, probably not more, but besides the twelve percent, what other, uh, change that you see that were measurable?
Um, definitely the, the edgenuity data, where I can watch almost in real time as they progress through classes. And so I can see where they're at in each of their different classes and the progress they're making. And I mean, one of the things I've told the guys is a big difference with this program, aside from the flexibility, is one, if they don't do well on something, it's not, oh, you didn't do well in that, you fail. I'm gonna kick it back to them. We're gonna talk about it and they're gonna redo it. And then they're not gonna get to the end of the year and if they didn't finish, they just fail and they have to start over next year. I've told them, if, if you're at eighty percent at the end of the year, you know, we'll continue. I'm, I'm gonna save that progress and we'll either continue over the summer or in the following year, we haven't really did, talked about that yet, but.
I think the other one too, it's not, it's not, um, measurable in the traditional sense, but in the very first few days that we were there, I did a climate and culture kind of like informal survey and discussion with each individual student and we wrote down some of the things of like, what was? with each individual student and we wrote down some of the things of like, what was, what was a struggle for you in your previous school experience, what was helpful for you? And I think just being able to see those drastic shifts that it was almost like a 180 from what was a struggle and what was getting in the way of the barriers to that most recent survey that they did where they were saying the things that are supportive and are helpful, they are feeling more successful too.
I just want to add that they did not know these students prior to this year. And that was when the first day we went over, that was one of the big things that the students said was that they were starting fresh. They didn't know judgment, they could come in and be who they were, who they want to be. And I think that helps with part of their success over there as well.
And I mean, on that note, I told all of them, we start fresh every day. You know, everybody has bad days and I'm not, you know. I told them flat out, if you tell me to go F off, it's one day, I'm going to welcome you the next day and we're just going to get back to work. Like that's just how I was a teacher. I, you know, people have bad days and they need to have some grace.
Any other questions? And then you are the primary teacher?
I am, yes.
And you're the adjustment counselor? And you guys are also involved teaching and doing some other?
Well, we've just started going over and supporting them. A lot of them are students that we had engaged with prior years. And they were happy to have us come over. And a lot of times I'll just talk with them about things that are happening in their lives that maybe they don't know about yet, but they're comfortable talking to us about. You know, and our hopes are to continue to talk more about prevention with them and things.
Right, supportive roles and all that type. Okay. And then I like that you mentioned the flexibility. The ownership, this is, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear in the way you presented that there's independent learning and some responsibility in this. So it really is, I guess it's an, it's an alternative, it's a new horizon, that's a great, great aim. You know, because it's a new time to be able to succeed, to meet what has to be met for those requirements. So aside the 12% of the attendance, it is nice that there's that flexibility. You have the community part and you're building it as you're going. I know the superintendent was big on this, to be able to look and be able to bring this alternative piece. And over the years, we've tried to offer various alternative opportunities for kids because not all learners are in the same container. And I can say that respectfully, classroom, you know, there's, there's environmental, there's, there's emotional learning. There's different, you know, perspectives to learn. So thank you for taking not only the risk, but the importance to connect. The connections to kids to realize you can make it and we have an opportunity for you. And with the support of other folks as well. Do they also have access to, aside from the community, from maybe potential art museums, things like that? Art, music, phys ed, things like that. Is there other components to as well?
Right now, they are, there is no specific opportunity to do that in the building, but we do have connection with the high school to potentially offer some of those. So I have one student who's expressed interest in participating in jazz band. So I'm trying to coordinate with the guidance counselor that we can get him over to the jazz band. I think that's like second semester or something and so hopefully we're able to figure that out for him.
Yep, and we also, I mean, we would love at some point, because we have the gym over there, to get the opportunity to have a gym teacher come over and do a class for them. Because right now, their health requirements, they're meeting them all with health classes that are electronic. They do go to the gym twice a day for that break time, but I would love to be able to part time get a gym teacher just to run one class for them, because I think most of them would appreciate that. On that though, I know we have one student who's very interested in joining the basketball team, was not able to before because of his grades. He has been working really hard. So he's looking forward to that and we have another student who is looking forward to joining baseball.
That's measurable progress already in six short weeks.
That's great.
Thank you for your commitment and your connections with the students.
The opportunity to do this, yeah.
Sure to thank the kids for the presentation because I know they put all of that together. So we really appreciate that and I really appreciate top notch work ethic. It's out to me as pretty impressive.
Good. Anything else? And then just, if my colleagues here, can we take one more item out of order, the new business? We have requests for approval for out of state music department field trips. Do that first.
We have a student presenter.
Just need one second to pull it up.
She's getting that up. My name is Tess Dunkey. I'm here as part of the music department and as the president of China, which is our schools music honor society.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So we are looking to get to field trips for the music department on record. One for this upcoming year later in second semester and one for the following year. The first one would be to New York City and it would be a day trip. That would very much mirror ones that we have done in the past with the big focal point being on the opportunity to go see a Broadway musical as well as like the edge aspect of doing a workshop, which would, if you could maybe get that video playing, it's like where students could be able to not just maybe see the musical, but also be able to learn. Personal audio, that's okay. Just going like beyond to that, watching the show and especially for students who are involved in our school's drama program, being able to learn choreography from professionals and see how the arts can kind of carry on into bigger aspects of our lives. Additionally, of course, we'd be in New York City, great bustling, exciting city. Being able to go out to Times Square, have opportunity, all go out to eat together, et cetera, et cetera. Oh, and for this, I mean, we are under, like, we believe that the musical we'd be going to see is Hades Town, which I'm excited for. I think that'd really appeal to the students and everyone.
The workshop that we go to is run by, the one that we went to prior to Wicked, Wicked was run by somebody who was in the production of Wicked. And so it's right in the studio, right in New York City and they bring you up. Where people are auditioning, it's really like real life.
Yeah, it transplants you into like the real life version of what these students get to be back here.
And then we go, we learn one of the dances and then we go and watch the show and it's one of the dances that was.
I was like watching on my video and then I was sitting watching music like, oh wait, I, I saw that. That was, that was a few hours ago. And then this would be much further out in 2027, a much larger scale trip out to Florida for Disney World. And this, again, it would have like a really great chance to perform and do another bit like similar workshop. The additional, much larger scale, obviously, we develop like going around and playing and like bigger overall trip, but also it's like more pulling time together and other opportunities to head to Space Center. Yeah, anything else you want to say?
You remember, we, we got this approved for March 2025 and financially, our kids weren't able to make that happen then. So we regrouped and we went to, we saw Hershey Park pictures before, went to Hershey Park so that we could kind of meet where they were financially and then said that we were going to try to do it in two years. And the reason we're coming to you tonight to ask for permission is so that we could start our fundraising with our Pro Music Booster Club earlier so that we could make it more financially feasible for students. Because we kind of heard what their concerns were the last time and we're trying to make it work for this.
And with the Hershey Park trip, oh, I was like, soon as I was on there, I felt like that was a really good middle, middle point for everybody and that students who went had a really great time, a lot of feedback overall about the trip. So going and maybe doing a larger trip, trip further out, I feel like would be an honest, very much in the student's desire to do.
Thank you. Talk around.
Yeah, move approval, but also I think this New York one, that's where what your band came in first and your chorus was given recognition as one of the top.
That was, yes, at both Hershey Park and then the New York City three day trip.
Yeah, you do a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, well, that's good. And what's your, what's your instrument?
Oh, I have saxophone.
I always bring the saxophone players too.
So I played first year alto sax at the UConn band for five years. In Barry High School.
So much more prestigious.
That's great. I have a question on logistics.
So you need a second? Need a second?
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry, go ahead.
They did a second, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, logistics, New York trip, you said a one day trip, like a?
Yes, so.
I've done a one day trip to New York, it was horrible. Are you going to have to take your bullet train like that?
Very, very, as I, I mentioned, I was on the previous New York trip and I can definitely see where this would involve for us, waking up earlier, getting home later. We'd be going, not on a regular school bus, we'd go on a.
Yeah, I think we left last time at six o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, so.
We get there in time for the workshop, the one o'clock matinee show. We eat dinner after. I think we eat a heavy breakfast like, oh, it's like 10 o'clock on our way down and then I think we returned by 10.
Yeah, so it was a little early morning, a little late night and definitely some quality time on the bus together. But overall, it did fit, I feel like relative very reasonably into a day trip. Although that everybody, you know, travels together, stays together, stuff like that. I don't see that being an issue.
Any other questions? So we have a motion, let's roll call.
Is this on both trips?
Yes, request for approval for out of state music trips for the New York City and the Orlando, Florida 2027 and then March 2026.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly? Sorry, not yet.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thanks. Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Mr. Muckore?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson? Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll go to administrative reports.
So in our director's reports tonight, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. But first I want to start by telling you in the superintendent section, so what I did was took our strategic goals. I put my goals underneath them and then each month I'll provide evidence of what has happened between our meetings there. So I continue to do articles for the Berry Gazette. I listed some of the ones that have been in there. I want to tell you that the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, we did have Jesse Collins, I think, reached out. I have sent two different things, but we haven't seen it appear yet. So if you're a Worcester Telegram Gazette reader, let me know, I might be missing it. But we haven't seen anything for Quabin that I've submitted yet anyhow. Also, one of the measures that I'm going to use is a family survey. I plan to release that the second week in November. That will be my pre sort of assessment and then I'll do one at the end of the year. All of our MCAS results were mailed home last week. There was, Desi had stated that they were going to implement a new parent portal. They're having some trouble with that parent portal, so they have not released that. The future was to be that parents would start to access their MCAS results online because they would have a historical sort of database. I, I don't have a read on whether that's actually going to happen or not. I also want to make you aware that I thought I linked in, but maybe I forgot to actually add the link. We are going to run a job fair on October 23rd. We are still in need of an LPN, some substitutes in many departments, food and nutrition, paraprofessionals. Last time we did a job fair here at the PDC, we actually really had a great turnout. So I encourage you to spread that word and we'll be getting these flyers out and on social media soon. The other thing I want to point out is under goal number two. So this came up in two of our meetings tonight, so it's really kind of interesting where we've heard that families are struggling to get mental health support for their students. So our new social worker, Liz Ortiz, has organized a agreement with UMass Memorial Health where they will send onsite clinicians into our schools. So this is completely separate from any counseling that we do. Many students receive outside counseling, but they're struggling to make it to their appointments or they can't get appointments. So we have signed an agreement with UMass Memorial that states that we will provide sort of referrals. Our social worker has families reach out that say they can't get services for their students. And so we will be starting that within the next couple of weeks. It does mean for our administrators, you know, really working on finding a schedule for the kids when they can go to their half hour session, different things like this. But this is something that we've been talking about and have had a need for in the past few years. If you remember, U Inc. used to partner with the schools and, and they would come in. It's the same kind of situation. So I will keep you updated on how that goes and how many students and families are accessing that. The other, on goal three, I'm going to let Shelley kind of talk about all of the things that are happening with curriculum. She has that in her report. And I did keep my budget goal in there, but I wanted to just make note, we really won't be able to measure that until 27. Because, 26, 27, I guess, yeah. Because we won't know how our budget is working until we get into the school year. So anyhow, that was like a last minute thought I had. I sent all of you some exciting news that the governor is going to open up listening sessions focused on the chapter 70 funding formula. And so I shared that not only with all of you, but also with our towns and our town administrators. I would love for Quabin to be fully represented at least in Worcester and in Greenfield. So I sent you a form if you are interested in attending, if you can attend, let me know. And if you would like to ride vans, we can secure the vans for that night to bring people out. But I would love to have you and I feel like this is a different audience than we had the last time. We are, I believe, we're going to have the governor, which will be great. And if people are interested, we could gather together to put some talking points together so that we maximize the opportunity of being there and we really state what has been challenging for, for Quabin.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Do I assume if the governor is there, then the head of the education subcommittee for the Senate and the legislature?
I would assume, they haven't stated exactly who's going to be there, but I would assume. I know Secretary Tutwiler will be there for sure. So more to come.
Good, thanks.
They're doing it and we've talked about it for many years, so we're, we're pleased with that. And those of you who went to UMass last year, you remember that they all danced around this conversation. It's sort of like, well, it's your job, as the legislators know, it's your job. And so it feels like it's at least a step in the right direction.
Father?
Yeah, well, you're going to have a sort of a prep session for everybody.
I would like to. I think it's, it's best for us to have some talking points. So I would love to meet together ahead of time.
To speak at that thing?
I very much would, yeah.
So in that, in the email to us, there's that form and it does have not only these dates, but also the date to try to get together.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're undergoing an audit right now for our English learner program and many of our administrators and teachers will be interviewed on October 29th. That's up and coming. We had to create a middle school pathway policy. It is not a policy that will go in our policy handbook. It's a policy that will live within our school handbooks, not our school committee policies. We'll go over that after. And I share with you a picture of our amazing unified basketball team. And the Narragansett team from last Thursday's meet, right, Trish, Thursday? Um, and so we just wanna really shout out um, our players and our coaches. And as Ellis said, it is just incredible for them to fill the gym. All the other teams come in and it's such an amazing vibe. And I actually got to meet Principal Rigney's mom and her mother-in-law. And they had gone to the unified basketball game and I I don't know if it was her mother or mother-in-law, but she had tears in her eyes. She's like, this was. The most feel-good thing really that she's ever been to.
But I'm gonna be emotional all year. I was a senior, yeah, it's the beginning, yes. But she was very moved by the whole thing.
They assured me that we'd see them at many events, so I'm I'm certain of that. Um. And Hardwick had a assembly the other day, working with the American Heart Association, and they have a challenge to their students. Uh, to participate in these challenges. And apparently, if fifty percent of them participate, then they can silly string the principal. So I think we can all look forward, uh.
Also learn how many kids don't know what silly string is. So this is even more exciting. What is silly? They all clapped, but they didn't know what silly string is. Even more, even more exciting than they think.
Kevin looks excited about.
And so I will just ask any of the other principals if there's anything they wanna shout out. I thank you all for coming and meeting our staff tonight. But anything else you guys wanna share? Start a school or anything? No? Feeling good?
No, one at a time.
Any questions?
Any questions for the super nun?
I got a question in terms of the parent survey.
Yes.
We um, do you intend to track completion rate? How do we know it's gonna be successful?
Well, um, you ask all the really good hard questions. So typically, uh, I would consider seventy percent response rate would be really great. I will tell you in the past, the last survey I sent, we had really good response rate like that. Um, but prior surveys, sometimes we have a response rate in the thirty, forty percentile. So we will make sure that we've got a high response rate or we'll revisit it and try another one. But I think in order to get accurate. Information, we really need to have like a seventy percent response rate.
Good.
Good question, yeah. So then Shelley.
Hey, so I'm very excited to talk about my first full appointment here. Um. As you know, we've been implementing Open Sci Ed at Middle High School and then in. Um, fourth and fifth grade this year. And we have some teachers in cadence three. Um, that are also piloting a unit this year in Open Sci Ed. So a lot of the professional development that we have done. Uh, we've gotten through a grant and we've been very fortunate to work with Seth Rob Stevenson. He's from Michigan. Um, he works with the Michigan Math and Science Leadership Network. And we've gotten a lot of really good positive feedback about his professional development, um, how he supports our teachers. And so we were recently talking to him about upcoming PD and some of the opportunities that we might have. Um, and possibly cost sharing with some other districts. And then we, through that conversation, we were actually invited to um. Serve as a showcase district for Open Sci Ed. And that's something that they don't have here in Massachusetts is what he was talking about. Um, so we have invited some of our neighboring districts to see if they would like to come here on November twentieth. Um, and partner with us to cost share some of the professional development, offer opportunities for um. Discussions around teaching and learning and we'll create those partnerships with other teachers in those districts and have those ongoing um, partnerships. Which would be really, really nice. Uh, I was gonna say something else too. So what that day will look like is we will be visiting uh, classrooms, implementing Open Sci Ed at the Middle High School in the morning. And then after that, we will come together, the staff that come from other districts will have an opportunity to be brief with teachers after going through classrooms. And then Dr. Rob Stevenson will give an overview of Open Sci Ed to all of the participants. And then in the afternoon, we'll travel to one of the elementary schools and go for some of the elementary classrooms. Um, they'll be able to see Open Sci Ed being implemented there as well. Um, and then from that, we'll plan our professional development with. Um, hopefully with our neighboring districts. Right now, I believe we have heard responses back from East Brookfield and Narragansett. Um, I think we're going to, Javisi said he was going to send it out through one of the science networks that he is involved in. Um, I made a connection with somebody at one of our other escape trainings that I was at the other day in West Springfield. So I sent that to that director of curriculum. Um, so we're hopeful that we do hear from a couple more districts in the upcoming days. Uh, we will send out our newsletter that went out with that information again before that date. So hopefully we'll be hearing back this more, but I'm really excited to be engaging in that work with. With um, the Michigan Math Science Leadership Network and Dr. Rob. Um, this is really, really great and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from our staff in regards to the professional development that they've received with them. Um, another training that I recently attended with a couple of folks from the middle school, high school was a state um, training. So that was a two-day training and it's around science curriculum adaptation project for special educators. So it's really looking to ensure that we are providing high-quality science. Um, instruction to our students, but also looking at how we can support our students with special needs in those classrooms. And working together alongside with the um, the science teachers and the special education teachers. To provide supports for students in the classroom. Um, that would be an ongoing project throughout the year. So there's a lot of different tasks that we have to do. We're doing some walkthroughs. Uh, we will provide training for our teachers and really set up some time and. Um, for the teachers to be able to work together so that we're able to support the students effectively in the classroom. Um, and that was just the very beginning, so we still have many more sessions throughout the year with them. Um, another recent training that we just did, um, it was Jill Langley's, myself, Jason Bill Martin. Uh, Christine Kimonis, we went to the DESC sponsored training through Spent Strategies. And really what that was to do is provide support for districts as we work through some of the issues that we need to address that were identified in our determination status. So basically what we're going to do is look at our data. We're going to complete a root cause analysis and then create an action plan based on some of the areas of need. So some of those areas that we have identified, um, included our dropout and graduation rate. Maintaining an accurate record system. So when we say that, it's kind of looking at how we're coding kids when they leave. Um, the Quabon Regional School District, what their plans are post-grad and making sure that we have that information. Um, and then our ELA and Math MCAS for grades eight and ten. So we just finished the first training with them. We had a full training with many of our staff members here in the district. We're going to do a full day training in November. Um, and that will allow us to train those participants. And then we can start thinking about how we're going to begin our work around addressing those issues. Our MCAS accountability reports, um, those are out, so we are working on those. They are recently released from Desi. So the reports, student reports were sent home to families on October eighth. And then we are currently looking over the data to prepare a presentation to, that we'll be presenting to all of you next month. Um, and then the last two things, we have our curriculum book list based on off of the um. Recent lawsuit, Ismail versus Taylor, um, where. Parents have the option to opt out of certain lessons that may be taught. Um, around LGBTQ um, content. So one of the things that came out of that is they were looking for teachers to create a book list. Of all of the books that they're using within their curriculum. The teachers have started to work on that. There's been a lot of work already completed around that. Um, there's, we'll still have to go back to that throughout the year, um. Especially at the elementary level because teachers have, for example, read-alouts that they do on a daily basis. So those are things that they'll update as they go. Um, they have done quite a bit and then we will be posting those to our websites, um, as those are completed. And the last thing that I have is, I just wanted to let everybody know that Dr. Sharon Celine, um, will be here. On October twenty second, so she will be presenting to our staff. Um. On that day and that topic will be beyond the ABCs of ADHD and neuroback emergence. Empowering all types of learners for success in school and life. Um, she's a local veteran psychologist. She's from North Hampton. She's an international speaker and award-winning author. Um, so I'm very excited to have her here at Quabon. And then she'll also be doing a parent workshop at night, um, for parents. And really just focusing on motivating kids to do no fun, boring, tough stuff. So from household homework to household chores, helping children and teens get started, persist and finish tasks. So she'll be here on the twentieth, the twenty-second of October.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Yeah. I think this is very impressive. It's not the old, we'll do the same thing as our parents and our grandparents and our great-grandparents, but. It really is looking out, looking at education, looking at children. And getting them on the way, out, doing, seeing the world. It's not, this is, this is really impressive, the stuff that's coming through here now. I, you all know the great pride I have in the school district and our towns. And this is, this is the kind of stuff that makes me have this pride. It's not just the same old, same old, same old. It really isn't. It really is looking out beyond and so forth. And that goes credit to you and your staff, to you. The principals, the leadership. I remember, uh, there was a McKinsey report probably forty, fifty years ago now saying the most. Person in the school district is the building principal. That's you guys.
That research still holds true.
I, I believe it. I believe it.
Absolutely.
So anyway, thank, thanks to all of you. It makes what we do very satisfying. And that makes us feel good about what's going on here.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Anybody else? Comments?
So I know if we have the MCAS score, you said we're preparing something for November, but any preview? How was the result for the general? Even then, I don't care about them anymore like I.
Well, I, without having that right in front of me, I can say that there are some positives that we. That I've seen in there around like student growth percentiles. And there's also some areas that we will need to work on. Um, we talked a little bit about it today in our admin meeting with um, the administrators. So we gave them that initial data to just start looking at that. And then we're going to delve into an item analysis around kind of where are areas of need. And focus. And so then they'll be able to work with their teachers on really kind of focusing on those areas that we need to strengthen.
So as a district, whether it's not a requirement progression, right? But we're still gonna react upon them and ensuring that kids take it serious and so forth and making sure we can actually use it as a tool. As a data really point to actually help us mitigate any issues we have.
Yes.
Um, again, early discussion, but with the recent news that has been out about the AI story. Of the MCAS and some other districts being affected by that, do we have any concerns? In what you've seen of the data so far and us being affected by it at all?
No, uh, they notified districts that had sort of the AI compromise. We were not one of them. Um. But, you know, so, no, maybe I wish.
Good, anybody else? Good, thank you.
Um, Kevin, your section's up next. There's anything you wanna say?
Basically, the um, USDA HAC and ventilation project that we completed, we did receive a lot of national grid. So we did hear a rebate of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars on that project, which basically will cover the costs that we elevate. So we, we actually spent on the project, the rest we paid by USDA. Um, Pathfinder, we're still working with Pathfinder on the press box, just waiting for some pricing on the material cost from them. We did receive pricing from an engineer as to what it would cost him to design the foundation for. The press box and construction management, just helping us with the cost estimated bidding, which would be around a thirteen thousand dollar mark. That's all we have for information on that at this point. Public hearing is tomorrow night in Oakham Center School, the battery storage projects. And Hardwick completed their Dallas drill training.
So, anybody else? Thank you.
Both Andrew and um, Jill are not here tonight. If you have any questions, you can let me know. I left Jill's numbers in around our special education students and where they are. That we keep them in throughout the year and she could update them every couple of months. And then that would uh, might be good information for the school committee. So Stacy.
Okay, Allison, um, I'd like to present uh, the phone warrants since our last school committee meeting. We had one bi-weekly payroll warrant, number eight, weekly payroll warrants thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. And accounts payable warrants twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Did these retireable?
No, we already.
No.
Okay.
Good.
Um, we have been notified that we received a fair share earmark of a hundred thousand dollars for one-time Chromebook refresh. Um, this was some last year around, I'm gonna say maybe April or May. We got a call literally like six o'clock at night. From Peter Durant's office. And they said, do you have anything that you have a one-time ask for? So we quickly put together a hundred thousand dollars for a Chromebook re- refresh, you know, to update Chromebooks. So Andrew has on a cycle for us every year. And we put into some curriculum. We would deny the curriculum, but we got the hundred thousand dollars for the Chromebook refresh. So we're in the process now of putting the grant together and submitting it. To, through JAMS to DESE for approval. Um, we still do not have any information on the World School Aid Award. We were hoping to have it in August, hoping to have it in September. So it's always, since I started um, taking it in, it's been in October, so I'm hoping any day we're going to get that amount. Um, and we got something today that I was expecting nine C cuts, actually sooner than later. But I guess they've been, they're not a definite no, but they've been pushed off. So that was good news for the time being. And we were working on E and D. Cheryl helped us today. Um, we almost have it, not quite. Um, but we're hoping to have it by the end of the week or next week and have it submitted for our initial review.
How much is in I and D?
We're thinking it's one point two million dollars, but it's not really working out for us. So we're thinking about one point two million dollars. Cheryl's confident with the number of one point two million dollars. We just, for some reason, she, we can't get the last page of the worksheet to tie out. So uh.
Well, that's a decent number for us, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Yeah, we did some, quite a bit of savings last year. I don't know if you remember. And um, a lot of the savings that Jill did in special ed.
Special ed, yeah.
Um, so we were able to really take those and put them against our D and D.
And the audit, we.
Okay, so uh, we actually asked today, cause Cheryl thought one page in the audit, FY twenty-five would have helped us with the E and D. But I called, so I called Craig, left a message and he emailed back and said it's not ready.
Okay. Any other questions? Good.
And then you have Mr. Myvilles' uh, sports updates on the back. So we're actually kinda coming to the end of the fall season, believe it or not. It goes by so fast. Um. But he has uh, several pictures there of our teams and our kids and um, that is the end of.
Good. Uh, and then. Scary, we're all set. We got it. Anything else for?
I have, I'm waiting. Uh, I have one final open valuation coming. He said he's having. Um, he actually said he'd have it by the end of last week. It's still not ready, but Cheryl said that's actually a comment at not, not anything that should be holding up the actual numbers report. So she was, said we should have, she was a little disappointed it was not ready today.
Great.
But everything's in for it from our end that needed to be submitted.
Uh, so committee reports, uh. Nothing. Nothing at Central Office?
We've actually had a couple meetings. Um. We met for quite a long time, um. Initially. Last week. And. We've discussed a lot about. Looking at. What. Tuition amount. Might be a good. Offer. Starting point for uh, North Brookfield. And. We, Colleen also provided us with a draft, there were not a lot of tuition agreements in the state, it's not a very common thing. Um, but she did have one for war work in Mahar that we reviewed, so we had kind of taken that home. To review and we had another meeting on Friday. And um. At this point, we really don't need to give North Brookfields. An amount. Um, they're gonna be presenting to their school committee this month their findings, so we'll kind of wait to hear from them. So we kind of tabled that discussion. Um. In the meantime, we had received another letter from Orange. Seeing if we'd entertain a tuition agreement with them and then. Right after that, we got another follow up that that was not coming from the school committee or the town, so. Um, I don't think, I, I don't think that it's really a viable option at this time, so. We're gonna wait to hear more, to hear back on that, but I, I don't think that'll work, move forward at this time.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, interestingly enough. We've done this before. With Pinky's. Town. My recollection is somebody at town meeting said. We're tuitioning our kids to North Brookfield, is that the best we can do? Interestingly enough, since.
Yeah.
Well, so they came with the North Brookfield, they went to Quabin and Big Park, wasn't it? And to get. Asked how much would be charged. For the kids because they tuitioned the first two or three years before they joined the district. We were the most expensive. And they came here. Because we were the best, even though Norman Benoy. He kept telling us we shouldn't take the kids because he wanted them to go to North Brookfield still. Which. In hindsight. Was probably not a good decision.
We had a lot of good discussion, and I think North Brookfield would be, you know, I think it could be a good partnership that's. You know, we're. So we look forward to when we can hear.
Well, we probably have all our best kids on already, don't we?
Probably, at least, you know, I mean.
A lot of school choice kids.
We have a lot of them, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, and you know, hopefully. If it worked out, that would, you know, maybe move towards. For the discussion of regionalization or, you know, how that will work, but I think it would be a good partnership for both. Quite honestly, the size wise and everything, you know, as we look at the numbers.
Well, when Tricia's family was running North Brookfield, it was a reasonable school, but. Has gone downhill ever since.
Amen.
I'm not asking for one, this is my comment. Oh, I think the Leach's. Were. Pretty good leaders of educational quality education in the town. Yeah.
So, stay tuned.
Stay tuned, we'll wait to see if they reach back out to us.
Buildings, ground, safety and technology?
We have a meeting tonight. Trying to read one in scratch here. We talked about the incident that happened, uh. The student had the threat. And uh, you know, I asked for uh. You know. The steps they made and uh. They'll call me and describe how they. Brought the kids to the office, they searched his backpack, they did uh, social media search. They searched his notebooks. They uh, you know, they did a very thorough search for, you know, found out. That uh. Wasn't considered a threat, yeah. But then another incident happened. Where. It, this one, the first one was in the middle high school, second one's in the high school. And the high school student thought he knew. The identity of the kid. That had the first threat and uh. He identified some kid, and it wasn't, wasn't actually the kid, but. That kid, uh, the kid that he identified turned out to be, after, you know, some investigation. That kid turned out to have some issues. And um, so now he is not in the school. He's in a forty-five day program, correct?
Yeah, we probably should be careful about what we share for student uh, information in a public meeting, so, um.
That's it for me.
Okay.
Um, we also talked about the Bleacher Bleacher Project. Which has now become really a press box project because we're not gonna be able to. Uh, forward to raise the bleachers up. The press bar. Boss project is gonna be. If we do it, it's gonna be pretty expensive, so. That's kind of where that is. We have two new policies that we wanted to talk about. Of course, it's really Dr. Allen's committee, but we wanted to look at them because they're. They have to do with buildings and grounds, so one was called the access to buildings and grounds. The other one was visitors to schools. And we have a couple uh, edits that uh. Mr. Clark and Colleen wanted to uh, make to these policies. And we'll probably come to Dr. Allen's subcommittee. With the details on that.
First Monday in November.
First Monday in November, good to know, okay. So uh, that's that. And uh. In the summer work, there's so much summer work that the buildings and grounds. Uh, department did. Uh, it's, it's just incredible how much work they did over the summer, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Clark to uh. To detail that because I couldn't take notes fast enough. He's gonna have, he would kindly.
Certainly, so it's, it's, this is just a brief overview, it's again, kind of an.
Pretty impressive.
What everybody does in the summer. They've. Taken apart, cleaned. Stripped wax, shampooed over three hundred classrooms and offices. Over forty-one sets of bathrooms, that doesn't include any single bathrooms, that's just full sets of bathrooms. That's kind of what their normal baseline is that they would do every single year. When you, when they take everything out of a classroom, everything completely comes out, everything comes out of a hallway. They strip everything down, six coats of wax goes back over the floor and then everything is buffed, then everything is put back in. So that's to every classroom office that had hard floors over three hundred. Um, just some of the highlights of sm- smaller jobs that were done. In some of the schools throughout the uh, summer and Hardwick, um, the conference room. Or after turn, the carpet was replaced in the conference room and the teacher's lounge. The carpet was removed and LVT flooring tile was put down. All the T eight lighting, which was non LED lighting, was replaced with LEDs, which we secured with a rebate. We installed the new probes, the domestic water tanks, so the water, when it comes in from the well, goes into a domestic water tank. The probes. Are in the domestic water tank and communicate to the controllers on how to, how to, what pressures and how much flow to be. Distributed to the school. Basketball court on the outside, the cracks that were in the pavement were all cleaned out. They were tacked and they were hot mixed and then um. Compacted back in, in Oakham, two classroom carpet replaced, all the T eight lighting. Our main T eight lighting was changed with LEDs with rebates. New brain tree, the gym floor that hadn't been refinished, it was one year finished, the cap floor was refinished. The shed was recently, the roof moved and we reached out the roof. And Hubbardston, there were two classroom carpet replaced, the gym floor was refinished, the sidewalk were done. Where the concrete was removed and replaced where it was damaged. Two circulating pumps for the water distribution off the well. Were replaced and recalibrated and rubbles. The gym and the cap floors were both refinished. And three wind, uh, broken windows replaced, the Quabin. The gym, two gyms, dance floors, all the floors were refinished, all the maintenance on L H A C program was completed. All gas wells and engine test certified. Two classrooms, the flooring was replaced with new LVT, the media center carpet. Was uh, completed, we had to unload the entire media center, all the books, all the cabinets, take apart everything, remove it. Uh, remove the old carpet, paint the entire media center, reinstall the new one, then put everything back. Um, the auditorium, we ended up. Replacing the carpet and painting all the flooring, which we did in-house, because it wasn't something that was budgeted, but we secured the. Material and did it all with ourselves. USDA H V O C project. In the um, auditorium, existing was four. Even event heaters, which basically only provided heat. We removed those and we installed five new split systems. Which can provide heat off fossil fuel, can provide heat off electrical. And can provide air conditioning, all of which are individually controlled. And tied back into our energy management system. Um, the middle school, we installed exhaust fans to try and remediate the heat load issue. Which are all temper- temperature, temperature sensitive and tied back into the energy management system to. Designed to remove the heat load, but also pull the cooling load from the cafeteria into the middle school area. It's just a brief, quick summary, summary.
Amazing, yeah, yeah. And that completes my report. Brown?
Yeah, it has been. Commented over the decades. That our building. Really. Was newer. And in better shape than their peers. And other districts. And it's this kind of work, this kind of attention to what needs to be done. That's the reason. So I think academically, looking at the students, we do a good job, but from. The standpoint of uh. Ma- maintenance and, and buildings and so forth, we, we do a good job there too.
If you just think about the square footage, think about the square footages and the. Six, seven buildings that we have. That's a lot, and then the um, distance, you know, the amount of. To go from building to building. Very good. Anybody else? Uh, policy review and reform.
All right, yes. Well. As you can see. Most of them. G B E B C, recommended by M A S C. J J E, recommended by M A S C. A B E. Recommended by M A S C. K P G. New from M A S C. So I moved that those all go on the table. For our next month's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Call.
We're just gonna do them all together?
Yep.
Okay. Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Muck?
Yes.
Uncle?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Chairman Brophy?
Yes. And as uh, Dr. Allen stated as well, on these policies. They're on for thirty days, any further comment? Any statements that people want to comment, public or any of us? Uh, we can certainly do that.
Mr. Brophy, we changed that from thirty days to our next.
To our next meeting, to our next meeting, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Middle school pathway exploration policy, uh. Colleen talked about that earlier. Classes fourteen and under. This is a requirement. That we go through each year. There seem to be a bit fewer. We don't, which we think these are important classes, we don't want to do away with them, but we feel it will lose the school committee. To understand what we have. As small classes and why, and kind of review each year. So this was October is the month that we do that. Also, we had a request. From Dennis Dexterator that he wanted to be able to have practices Sunday morning. Uh, on Sunday. Originally, that policy may not go back to me. Was, we thought Sunday mornings was a time when kids needed to be with their families, have the option of going to church and that sort of thing. He's saying that in this day and time, that occasionally there are, there are. Times when they really need to have a practice, in his perspective. Because they have the, these intermural programs for about eleven thirty in the morning. To late afternoon. Many of their kids are coaches and referees and so forth, and they make a few dollars doing that. And one of the things that he does. Exceptionally well, he's a, he's a very fine coach, but he's a better teacher. And he works with the kids. He has study sessions. He has tutors. I do say there's two or three to four or five kids. Each year. That pass because of the work that he and his kids do. On the tutoring, and they have a tutoring session uh, later on Sunday afternoon. As a subcommittee. We're still working this one through. Colleen is going to uh, check with parents, students and coaches. To find out what their perspective and position is. I think as a subcommittee, we still like the idea of Sunday mornings. We still like the idea of them being able to go to church. We still like the idea of having at least one day a week where they don't have practice. And they have some time. And yet. He's saying there's, there's times when they really need us, uh, there's a, a turn of Clark Turman on a Monday. Or, or there's been bad weather. Uh, so. That, that one is not going to be reported out, we're still. We're wiggling our way through that one, I just wanted you to know that that's on the table, and I guess that one. Along with a couple of building and maintenance. Will be in the November. And I'm sure Colleen will have other things for us. From M A S C.
I'll have the survey results for you.
Uh, the survey results. Yeah, and I bet you'll have the uh.
MCAS, MCAS, yep.
And probably enrollment, what our enrollment looks like too, you can have a word on that, I know we haven't.
You want that to go to policy review and reform, sure?
I know, I put those in your. Uh, folders in error, it was actually meant for policy.
It's okay, well, thank you.
So that was it for this one.
Any other questions, Mark?
Yeah, just like, just a couple. Questions or comments, every year we get a budget time. We talk about classes. As I go through the list, I see a lot of semester, like classes in the same semester. And they both have the same, it's the same class, they both have low enrollment. Now. Sure we've thought about. Maybe combining some of these classes into one class, where people still have the class as an option. But we don't tie up. Additional resources to run two classes, there's also a couple of classes here with uh. And I'm sure there's a very good reason. Like uh. Was I, what was I, there's four in the class of the English nine.
It's a special education.
Oh, that is special education.
Yeah, special education class, um. We do look at this each year. Um, sometimes what happens with those low enrollment courses. That you're speaking of that run in the same semester and they're both low, is due to student. Schedules, we can't always fit them in at the same time or the same block. Um. Many, and we talk about this too, some of the classes run concurrently where. Um, groups, there might be groups, they're listed as individual classes, but they might be groups of students working with one teacher. But. I think there are areas that we need to look at that we could um, reduce for next year's budget. For sure.
You know, it always comes up.
It absolutely.
We always justify in that.
Yep.
You know, I mean, we, in the past, I mean, we maybe. Called out a couple of courses, but. You know, we always just.
Yeah, we did some things this year to combine, uh, you don't see any IB courses this year, which is, uh, I feel like that worked. So we combined IB and AP courses to increase those numbers. Um. So I think that most of those are not off of there, the other thing is sometimes teachers can have. Classes of twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and they end up with one class that's small, again, it's because of how we can fit students in. But um. I have some ideas, I'm, I'm sure the middle high school administrators have some ideas of. Where we can uh, possibly reduce.
Yeah, proactive.
Yeah.
Budget sessions. Yeah, proactive. They have budget sessions.
Yeah, actually, honestly, some of them, we, we have to make decisions before we put our course selection out to students. Because we can't offer them a class, have them take it, and then say, we're gonna reduce that class. So it is, uh, things we need to start working on as soon as possible.
But you're, you're right, Mark. This needs to be attended to, which is why every year. We have the administration present this to our subcommittee. So at least the school committee knows what they are. And we have, go through them and we get a justification that either satisfies us or not. So that, this is important enough. We don't want to just slough it off, as you said, because you get people saying, what, what do you know when you slough? We need to make sure that the administration has attended to this and presented to us. So we know what's going on and why.
Then we got an equity issue too. You know, you have, uh, a teacher with a load of a hundred and ten, twenty kids, and then you got another load of maybe fifty-five, six, sixty kids. That's something to look at too. Those are the realities. And those questions you've been for ten years, I've been looking at. And, you know, I'm a real opponent, uh, for AP and I, and IB and what we did. And how are we doing getting the word out and how are we giving kids opportunities in junior and senior years? And, and we're doing things. The administration is doing things for, we just don't have a lot of, um, IB diploma students. But we have IB courses that kids are taking, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So when we talk about all boats rising, but that's a real concern. You look at some of those class sizes and say, how do you justify the, the, the schedules?
No, I, I totally understand. And, uh, no, I agree. I be proponent of IB. It's such, but I mean, mythology and folklore, maybe like providing one class or two classes, but just, just the idea.
Right.
Is there a way we can put them out as a cumulative? Because when I was reading this, like your point, we see two classes. Um, but they're the same class, four or five students. But can we actually combine it by saying, you're a ninth student? Even though that physically is sometimes, is there much to reason for that? Like, I'm just curious.
Uh, well, it's honestly, it comes from, it's computer generated and that's how the software does it.
Okay.
But I'm sure we could figure it out. You know what I mean? That's just.
We're working on figuring it out for the day, so.
No, the, the combined report. I know what you're saying. Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, services? Okay, unfinished business. We'll have a regional agreement. Anything at this moment?
Um, Colleen worked with the attorney to kind of clean up the language to make it more clear. On what is a town-owned building and district-owned building. So all of the other edits that the group made. Have gone to DC for final approval. So we'll need to hear.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, any public comment in the waiting?
No.
Okay. Spoke of any concerns or accolades?
I think my computer died.
Seeing and hearing none, we took care of everything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, no.
And is there a second, second and adjourn?